Buddy, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for August 3, 2023. It's 6:00 PM and we are opening the meeting. Can I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So, everybody is aware, we're recording via Zoom. We're not going out on Facebook tonight because Mr. Belize is off tonight. We are going out via the Local Access Network, which is now Channel 6. It is not 12 anymore. It is Channel 6 now. They just switched it over today. So, if you're looking at Local Access Network, it's no longer 12, it's number 6. Okay? So, first thing on the agenda was a discussion with Quabog Regional School District Superintendent Stephen Duff on updates from the school district. Something happened to me?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Unfortunately, Mr. Duff had a family matter that came up this afternoon, is not going to be able to attend this evening's meeting. But I've had some conversations with Mr. Duff over the last week or so, and it is his intention to give updates on the district regularly, monthly, to the Board of Selectmen now that he has become the new superintendent of schools for the district. He wants to establish a clear line of communication with monthly updates directly to the board. So, it is his intention to be at a meeting, you know, at least once a month to give updates. I did receive an email from him this afternoon. He was going to update us tonight on the project that's been ongoing with the Green Communities grant that we have received, that the town had applied for and received for the Warren Elementary School. The vendor has been working diligently at the school throughout the summer. In this particular email, I'll read this right into the record. He apologized that he wasn't able to meet this evening. I am unable to attend as I have a family matter, and he does apologize. With that in mind, he'd still like to provide an update on the project at the Warren Community Elementary Center. The project started out very strong with most of it being completed at 95%. Guardian spent many hours and believes that they have found all the shut-off valves for the individual ventilators. So, as you may remember, this particular project is updating old, you know, shut-off valves and updated old existing equipment to make it more energy efficient. As long as the valves hold, we should be in good shape for the plumbing to start, which the plumbing part is going to be the draining of the existing lines and making sure that the monitors that they're going to be installing will hold. This is good news. He said the not-so-good news is that they feel as though that the project may be three weeks behind in schedule. Mr. Estrella has been meeting with Guardian on a regular basis and has informed them that the plumbers need to get into the building as soon as possible. If this doesn't happen, the project may not be completed by the beginning of the school year. This will prove to be very difficult with students getting back into the building. We are asking to meet with Mr. Estrella on a weekly basis moving forward. So, I will be meeting with Mr. Estrella weekly, you know, with Mr. Duff to make sure that this project continues to move forward. We're happy to facilitate, but we think it's important that everybody is well aware of where we are with the project. I talked to Guardian again today. We feel as though that after speaking with Guardian and I circled back around with Mr. Duff, that more than likely, depending on whether or not all of the lines have to be drained, there may not be a need to have all the lines drained in the heating system. If they are need to be drained, that was unexpected for the project because there was so much buildup of soot and contaminants within the lines, that if they do need to be drained, all of them, then it would probably set the project back an additional two to three weeks. We're hoping to get that project done, you know, by August 28. You know, if this doesn't happen, then you're looking probably more along the lines of the second week of September. Be a little bit of an inconvenience and a scheduling problem for the schools. But we feel as though that after working with Mr. Duff and Mr. Estrella, if we can narrow it down now, then they can start planning for their scheduling conflicts that they may have for after-school activities, because then the vendor would be coming in at second shift instead of first shift, you know? And the minimal, very minimum, you know, disruption during the school classroom, if at all, any during the year. Most of the work has already been done within the schools, within the classroom itself. We're hoping that the lines don't have to be all drained at once. But we went, pictures were taken, and most of the classroom work has been completed. There's still some classwork that needs to be done, but they're working to get this fixed and move the project along. Again, this was from a grant, state grant from Green Communities that will help us, help Warren Elementary monitor all of their HVAC and monitor their utility costs on a more efficient basis.
Okay. Did he say anything else?
No, that was it.
All right. Well, very good. It's definitely encouraging to hear that he's going to come and give us updates, and hopefully this opens up a better line of communication where we can discuss things. And if we do have concerns, we can get him on early and not wait to the very end of the year to deal with certain things. So, that's actually very good, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And hopefully, did he say when he would like to be back?
I don't know of that yet, but tomorrow I'm meeting with him and Mark Estrella at 11 o'clock at the school, so, you know, I'll probably have a better idea.
Very good. All right, moving on. Next thing on the agenda, Cemetery Commission wanting to inform the board about the Founder's Parade and Adoption of a Grave. Beverly Larkin from the library to talk about how we get involved. Okay. So, hello.
I'm from the cemetery.
Yes.
I have to see Jim.
So, everybody knows, if you're going to talk in the meeting at any point, you have to identify who you are, and if you're a resident, or if you have a position on a department or anything like that, that's part of with going out via social media. We have to do that to comply with social media guidance.
Cindy Baxter, Cemetery Commissioner. I got permission, or we've had a discussion in our board, and we voted to approve a Founder's Day tour, a Founder's tour, not a parade. Hopefully, it won't be a parade, but if there's enough people, I guess it'll be a parade. And that's, I've tried to connect that up with a particular date. I mean, August, I think I mentioned August, but that's kind of warm. So, I looked through the history that I have, and on May 2, that's when the townspeople, the new town people, one of their second meetings, it was their second meeting, and they determined the size of the meeting house, they determined who was going to be on the committee, and 300 pounds is put aside for the raising of the building. So, the first Saturday in May would be the date that I would like to have the tour through the cemetery. So, that's already been, the commission hasn't said May is fine, they've just said go ahead with it. So, that's the date that I'm going to target for our tour through there. Some of the ideas that have come to my mind is to adopt a Founder's Grave, where people in the community, I can have a list of the patriots that are in there, and the people that, young people that are in there. They can choose to adopt one of those, thereby learning about the person and actually putting a thin of flowers there and being attentive to their parade, to make sure the flag is always standing up straight, flowers are, you know, if they're not watered, I go there anyway. But it would be a good way to get the community involved to understand their heritage, as well as the more boots we have on the ground in the cemetery, the less likely there's going to be any trouble in that area. So, I've been diligently working at finding more revolutionary veterans, and I've found two more that haven't been previously listed. Because that area, as Jim, I think, will tell you, that area, there is really not, the names really aren't listed as to who's there. So, I'm trying to start making a little map of who's where in that area, because that information is just kind of, over these 300 years, it's just kind of, most of 300 years, it's just kind of gotten lost, as far as who's in each spot. So, it's just a planning stage. There's going to be more that I'm going to do with it, but that's what my mindset is at this point, is to make it an annual for us. I don't know about anything else that the town wants to do, if somebody from school wants to get involved. I'd like to ideally have people at certain grades reading information about the people that are there and their positions in the community and some of their history, so that they can recognize that these people that founded this town were just people, and we're just people too, so that we can make a wonderful impact in our community as well. So, that's the idea.
I think it's a great idea. Yeah, sounds good. You sound great.
So, I'm listed as liberally, but it's really Barbara Larkin. I'm Barbara Larkin. I'm 35 High Street, but also from the Board of Directors of the Warren Public Library. And Cindy and I met in the cemetery one morning, a couple of months ago, when she had, I don't know his name.
Standing stones.
A person who was an expert on cleaning and restanding stones, and we got to talking, and I got to talking with that man as well. And so, I got to thinking about how the library could be part of this potential Founder's Day, because we are, the library is a repository of much of the history of this town. So, we would like to participate in this in some different kinds of ways, perhaps have an open house, also involving schoolchildren, either high school or elementary, with perhaps a contest, to do research and a paper on some of the folks who are buried in our cemetery. And we do have just a small amount of money that we could offer monetary awards for best presentation. Those are just some of the things that we've thought about. We have a huge number of portraits of townspeople, and some of them are not even identified, so that would be also an opportunity for research, either for our children or for some of our library personnel as well, and do some things about that. So, we would like to kind of join, you know, with the cemetery in opening up the history of our town one more time, and we haven't done this in quite a long time, since perhaps the last anniversary of our town.
Yeah, I think it's great, you know, any help, you know, welcoming. And it would be a great, you know, alliance between you two to be able to do that.
Yeah, we never knew each other before, and so this is really, really super, super great, and we've had a couple of meetings, and, you know, we're really pretty compatible about thinking about history and the importance of history.
We have a local historian sitting behind you too, Mr. Joseph Conrad.
That's great. Yeah, well, we would, you know, perhaps we would, you know, get a small committee together. You know, we also have the historical commission, and we have Sylvia Book, and we, I think we would be certainly willing to sort of branch this out and have more than, you know, two things going on.
I actually sent an email to Sylvia, telling her that there wouldn't be a heavy duty when we needed her expertise.
Her mind.
Yeah. And, I mean, and it's open to any department, because irregardless of what happens, the cemetery is already going in a forward motion of what we're doing, but we'd like to, you know, it'd be nice if eventually this could be an annual event for the whole town. I mean, you could have a lawn mower parade, you could have apple pie in contests. I mean, you could have all sorts of things, like it used to have back in the day when the community was the community. So, I mean, all departments are welcome, the fire department, whatever aspect they'd like to do, the police department, and the parks department, and anybody would like to, just grab a little piece and do something, I think it would be marvelous, I think.
Get the chief to dress up in a historical, you know, chief's uniform.
No, you say Tom Pegg.
From the 1700s.
So, we hadn't talked about, I mean, the date you're thinking of, so I'm not sure that that, we would need to all have it on the same day, but we could sort of start this as a spring, summer celebration for our town.
Yeah. There you go. Yeah. Sounds like a great idea. Whatever you need.
Just want to inform, plus, you should know, and Jim can elaborate on this if he wants to, those three big trees on Maple Street, right in front of the, at the beginning of the cemetery, they are in horrendous condition. Most of the branches from the top have already fallen on the ground. It's dangerous for people that are over there working. It's dangerous for the stones, it's dangerous for the street. So, we have already covered some funds and have a contract to have a tree removed. We've already pledged another certain amount to have another one removed, and Jeremy's helping us with this, the tree warning, he's going to be taking another portion of it.
You're going to need a crane for some of that, right? You think that was part of the issue?
Yeah, yeah. He's, they, you know, they're, they kind of know what they're doing, so they're just paying what we can afford to pay, and he's going to take care of the rest, and hopefully it'll be done by the end of August, on the soon, done before snowfall, because it's jeopardizing everything there, including the workers. I mean, you need to see somebody down there mowing, and a boom, and this big fallen out and hurt something, so. And we'll replace him with something smaller, something ornamental, something that we don't have to worry about getting to be so huge, just so you don't get any calls.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you got to take care of trees. If you need anything, just let us know. Just to for our know, and, you know, we'll do whatever we can to help you.
Or maybe we'll let you buy the replacement trees. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Did you have any questions?
No.
I think Founder's Day is a great idea.
Well, you know, we're going to, we've got two selectmen there that are deceased, that, you know, you guys would more than want them to be their representatives during that to speak to.
How old are they? When did they die, or when were they born?
They died in 1777. Both of them died in the Battle of Lake George, and they died like a month apart in Salmon Key, so it was a founding member of our town. Noah Ash.
Oh.
And they both died in Salmon Key. Bottom of the pond. Of course, they were British, so it's okay. It'd be surprising to hear the words that I think you'll hear, that Noah Ash, we got to say, it was quite a big pounding on the team. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you very much. All right. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is discussion and possible vote in signing on the reimbursement of Chapter 90 funds. Did you have something on this?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is pretty much standard stuff here. This is for a project that our Highway Surveyor, Jeremy Olson, has been working on, Bragg Road. It has started the project in August of 2021, finished the project in September of 2022. And so, the town can apply for the final reimbursement report, which would be $236,635.28 for state funds from Chapter 90. This is the certification by the Board of Selectmen, the accounting, the town accountant and Jeremy Olson. Funds are available, that the project has been completed, and that the selectmen sign off on it.
Okay. Did you have any questions?
No.
Steven?
Question.
Yeah. Sure.
As you are aware, Bragg Road, there's a violation on that when the water road was widened. We've been to the assessor, there is no record of the town having any type of water discharges. The town has dumped all the water on Bragg Road on private property, it's flooding it out, and it needs to be dealt with.
Okay.
Before this money gets disbursed, that was an illegal use of Chapter 90 funds to put the dump stormwater on private property without a warrant.
So, again, that was discussed previously, you know, went anywhere?
It was just, it was brought up to the town, Jeremy said he'd tear it out, and then he decided he wasn't going to, so it's not settled.
Okay. Well, that's something you'd have to take up with Jeremy.
I've taken it up with him, he's ignored it, I've taken it up with you, you guys have ignored it. You guys were going to talk to Jeremy about it, nothing's happened about it, so I just wanted to be on the record that if you disbursed, it was illegal use of Chapter 90 funds with that stormwater using it there.
Okay. You can file an appeal, do whatever you need to do. You said you were going to get a lawyer before, you can perfectly do that if you see that fit, so thank you for the input, Duff.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Motion?
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the reimbursement of Chapter 90 funds for Bragg Road.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Okay. Acknowledgement of the resignation of the Board of Health member, Charlene Ferris, and to open the process for town residents to submit a letter of interest to serve on the Board of Health until the next municipal election. So, we got a letter of resignation from Ms. Charlene Ferris, and that was dated July 20, 2023, and she said, "I resign my position on the Board of Health due to the lack of communication teamwork. I can no longer commit to my position on the board." Charlene Ferris. Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. So, a motion is set.
Yeah, make a motion to accept the resignation of Charlene Ferris from the Board of Health.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Posted?
So, we have, right after the resignation letter, there's a draft of a notice of a board vacancy. If the board wanted to just take a look at it, if they're comfortable with it, we can get this posted tomorrow on the website and throughout town.
You good with it? Yeah.
Okay. We'll get it posted tomorrow.
All the stuff in the back is just...
This is a, the next...
The local boards.
Yeah, this is some of what the Massachusetts Boards of Health Council has put together as duties and responsibilities of board members of the Board of Health. So, I put that together, you know, in case anybody wanted to take a look at it.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Next thing on the agenda, discussion with Rebecca Serra and Richard Demetrius about resigning and possible acceptance of resignation. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm not going to stand because I'm like, what, again?
I'm not going to ask you to stand.
Okay. So, we're here once again, Rich and I, and actually Judy and Lloyd, who are council members also tonight. First of all, I want to thank them and family and friends, my brother and sister-in-law, and our veterans and their friends and family for coming out to support us tonight. You know, we have gone back and forth over this special municipal employee designation. I appreciate the fact, David, that you said I did not have to resign, that you would get me some help, which I do appreciate, but you made it sound very nonchalant, that all I needed was somebody to slap hot dogs in a bun. It's more than that.
Actually, I've never said that.
You said you'll get us some help.
I'm getting help, yeah, but I never said hot dogs in a bun or anything like that.
But don't make it sound so like it was, oh, the food gets you some help. There is far more to the Veterans Council, what we do. I would ask both of you, do you know what happened in the mountains of Korea to Mr. Oki? Do you know which one of our veterans stormed beaches in Normandy, or what happened at the Battle of the Bulge? Which one of them that is 100% disabled due to the service of our country? You know, I was never more humbled when I received a call from the wife of one of our Vietnam veterans who was dying and asked to see me. He knew his fate, but he wanted to make sure that he got to thank me for what I did. Maybe Kathy, she can speak on that. In the last four years, we gave $12,000 to graduating students at Quabog. Sadly, maybe this is a conversation that you should have with the school after we were oh-so-generous once again at town meeting. Out of those, all of those, we got two thank you letters, and they were students from West Bromfield. We received the list, we asked the town clerk for the list of special municipal employees. Currently, there's 11 either boards or committees or departments that have been granted the status, and all totaled, including the three of the Board of Selectmen, which is automatic, including, that totals 99 employees and volunteers for the town of Warren. And when we asked for at least the Veterans Council, forget Cert, forget Conservation Commission, we asked for the Veterans Council, it was just too much to do. So, and I would like to read a letter from somebody who, a family in town who, they just lost their loved one, who was a veteran. "I'd like you to know how wonderful the Veterans Council has been the last few months. Our big boy passed away in May and was living in North Carolina. I reached out to Becky and Rich many times with many questions. They were both very understanding and beyond helpful. Our situation was a difficult one and had many bumps in the road that hindered us getting him home. Both veteran council members provided us with the much-needed information, and we are fortunate that Aaron was brought home to us this past weekend. They are both a crucial component to our veterans in town. I am eternally grateful for their support and just wanted you to know how lucky we are to have them assist us in a difficult situation." And when he was brought home, it was his body, his ashes. So, I don't know what more, other than to feel that we were targeted and clearly, if there's 99 people in town that work for the town and volunteer for the town, what is four more? I really don't understand.
So, to answer that, after reviewing the list, there's the moderator, planning board, store commissioners, cemetery commissioners, plumbing and gas inspector, Board of Health, fire department members, building inspector, dog officer, election officials, and council and agent. Those are all special... board, store commissioners, cemetery commissioners, plumbing and gas inspector, Board of Health, fire department members, building inspector, dog officer, election officials, and council and agent. Those are all special municipal employees, and that was done in 2010, okay, when that was voted.
There's older than that, though, right?
Yeah, and those were, that's when it was given to the town clerk, but the moderator was in 1991, planning board was in 1992, store commissioner, yeah, they were all in the 90s when it was done. For some reason, it was, says it was revised in 2010, and to be honest, I don't agree with this list. There's a lot of departments that should not be on this list. The planning board shouldn't be on this list, store commissioners shouldn't be on this list, plumbing inspector and gas inspector definitely should not be on this list. Same thing with building inspector, dog officer. You know, there's a lot of departments that should not be on this list, and I think it should be revisited, and those departments should be removed. Because we don't need all those special municipal employees, because that's not right to our entire town. The focus of those boards is the focus on the best interest of the community, not worry about personal financial issues that may come up for them, whatever. They should be focusing on the town, that's it. If they have a financial interest that they would like to achieve, so be it. Resign from the board, go pursue your financial interest, and we wish you the best. But, you know, giving blanket amnesty to those boards, I don't think should be happening, and I definitely think we should revisit this and remove a majority of those people from that list, because they shouldn't have. I don't see any need for any of them to have it, you know?
What kind of problems has happened since 1999 with this? You didn't even know they were special municipal employees, how big of an issue is it?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, they need to be off.
Going on?
Who cares?
That's right, who cares? Has there been a problem? But has there been a problem?
It doesn't matter.
Why doesn't it matter?
Because they're skirting the ethics laws.
They're not skirting ethics laws.
The law was made for this purpose.
Let me tell you, hold on one second.
So, they wouldn't be skirting.
Hold on one second.
I have the floor.
Yes, first of all, if you're gonna, you're gonna speak, ask to be identified, represented, identified, and we'll identify you. Put your hand up, we'll get to you. But people are not gonna be speaking over each other, because if you start doing that, I'm gonna have you removed from the meeting, okay? We gotta control the meeting, we're all gonna be civil, and we're gonna talk about this.
I would like to correct Mr. Ihaaker. Mr. Ihaaker, that is the most sarcastic thing you've ever said, you're skirting the law. The law, you got a point, you got a letter from legal counsel that said, "This is how it's done." You got an opinion from the State Board of Ethics that this is how it's done, nothing skirting. Let me tell you what skirting the law is. Jim Ferrara called me, "Well, if we do it, if you kind of do it this way, can somebody else from your corporation help you get your permit, and maybe we can work around it some other way?" That's skirting the law. And Jim, what did I tell you? I said, "I want no part of it, I want to do it the right way." Did I not say that?
We were trying to figure out a way to...
You were trying to, you were trying to skirt the law. You guys tried to skirt the law, we didn't try to do it, I tried to follow the law.
Okay.
And I do not appreciate you saying we're trying to skirt the law.
I didn't say you were trying to skirt the law.
Yes, you did. We'll replay the tape.
So, again, it's a way of circumventing the system.
It's not a circumventing.
It is, a special municipal employee, that's saving around and benefit financially while maintaining a position within the town that oversees, or potentially oversees, a position that you might be looking into, okay? So, as far as a town employee, a town employee's only interest should be the best interest of the community, that's it. Not lying in their own personal pockets or whatever, and I'm not saying that's what you're doing, Rich, or anything like that, I'm just saying, that should not be in their mind. The only thought that should be in their mind is, "How can I better my community?" That's it, okay? And having a special municipal employee status kind of allows them to do that, and that's wrong.
I'll tell you what allows you to do. I spent 16 years on the Conservation Commission, over 16 years on the Conservation Commission. You can ask the chair, you can ask your wife, I have not once taken one job in this town that has ever gone in front of the Conservation Commission. I have not once bid on any job in this town. I've lost tens of thousands of dollars in this town. I've supported your efforts in the solar. I never bid on anything in this town. This job has cost me tens of thousands of dollars. I challenge any of you or anybody in this town to do what I've done, none of you. I simply want to get a permit that I need to get to renew, that's what I'm trying to do, and you guys won't allow it, that's what you're doing. And you're making it sound like I'm skirting the law, I'm trying to profit, I'm trying to make a living, and I've donated to this town more than anyone. I challenge any of you to do what I've done.
So, there's a lot of people that have done a lot for this town, there's a lot of people dedicating a lot of time.
For you to say I'm skirting the law.
Honestly, I'm sad that you're making the decision to, I don't know if you're still entertaining and resigning or whatever.
I didn't make the decision, you made the decision.
Well, I'm not making the decision for you, I'm not making you resign, okay? And I'm not making Becky resign, okay? Again, we wish you guys would stay, we want you to stay.
You laid down, you made...
We're not gonna give special municipal employee status to employees, and we're actually probably gonna take it away from a lot of them.
I would like the townspeople to know, you have made it where we have no choice but to resign. My choice is this, my choice is...
Becky doesn't have to resign.
I'm not talking to her.
She has nothing to do with it.
I'm talking about me right now, okay?
That's up to you, though.
It is not, my choice was to volunteer for this town, work for the, you talk to anybody that came in front of the Conservation Commission, we did nothing but fight for them, we went against the DEP many, many times from many people, and your wife could verify it. We spent hours and hours countlessly supporting the taxpayers of this town and their rights. We've done. I simply need to renew my permit, and you say, "Oh, you can volunteer all you want, you can just go hire a lawyer." Now, for the ability to work and to volunteer for this town, I must hire an attorney to go get a permit for me, because I am not allowed to get it, because I'm not a special municipal employee. So, don't make it sound like it's like, "Oh, this is your decision." No, this is your decision, and your decision, and your decision.
Okay.
I have the floor. Just really, I really don't have that much more to say, other than, you know, you said that employees, well, I hope you actually negate every one of these designations. You really should, because don't pick and choose. How is fire? You've got 48 members...
We didn't even know these positions were special municipal employees until we got...
Then you need to do, you need to do your homework then, and you made the comment just now, a few minutes ago, that, you know, employees and volunteers of this town are supposed to do whatever, put the town first, and if you, you cannot sit there and honestly say, and to Mr. Ihaaker, cannot honestly say that the Veterans Council has not put the veterans first.
We have. That's not even a question about your job that you've done, you've done an amazing job, and again, we hope you don't resign, we don't want to see resign, you know?
We don't want to work under this regime.
We don't want to resign either. We don't want to resign either, but for him to have to jump through hoops and hire somebody to go get a permit, which he's more than capable of doing on his own, it's just ridiculous.
Again, you know, we just sat there and said, "We're not gonna give special municipal employee status to employees."
Good luck, Eddie.
And we're gonna remove a majorities, if not all of them, because I don't see, I don't see a need for it. There's no need for this, they should be focusing on the betterment of the town, and that's it, and not profiting in any way, or using their position to profit with.
Why did we profit?
I'm not accusing you, I'm not saying that about you. That's the slippery slope, okay? Just because you haven't done it, doesn't mean others wouldn't do it if they were in that position.
Has anybody done it since 1999 with 100 people there? How many people have done it?
We don't know, we're just getting this, okay? But it opens up that loophole, so they can.
It's not a loophole, we just, please stop calling it a loophole, it's a law.
It creates, it creates a status for them to use their position to profit.
You should read the law, please read it, then read it to the people on TV, read what it says, read the examples again, you make it sound like it's the worst thing from Christ. Read the law so people understand what it is, read it.
Again, I'm not gonna go through and read everything in there.
And again, you're gonna pull the planning boards...
People can do their research if they want to, that's fine.
Are you gonna ask Derek to sit down and say, "Is Derek violating it as well?"
To redirect this again, that's not even a question in it, okay? The question is, for...
I didn't profit yet, he did.
I don't know how he profited.
He drew plans for somebody, I laid it out for you, it's, read the law, it's a violation of the law.
I looked into it, he never got any money, he gave somebody a plan.
Then you obviously don't understand.
Of a garage, and that was it.
Excuse me, you don't obviously understand, did you take the ethics test?
Absolutely, I did.
Then read the section, what it talks about money.
He didn't get any money for it.
Tell me what it means with the ethics law.
He did not gain any money.
You do not have to make any money, you can actually lose money, and it's an ethics violation, you should know that, you're a law officer, you should be able to refer, tell me the law, what it says. Here you are, making excuses for the guy, it doesn't matter if he makes a dime, it doesn't matter if he loses money.
And again, this is not about Derek, it's not about anybody else. So, back on topic, this is about...
Well, it's one of your board members, it is about Derek.
Mrs. Esara want to resign, or we're saying you're gonna resign, okay? That's what this is about. It's not about re-debating special municipal employees, okay? We went too far off on that one, okay? It's not re-debating all that, it's not debating about somebody who's not even here right now, okay? It's about, you know, your status with the town on the Veterans Council, okay? My thing is, is I hope you don't resign. Honestly, I don't, okay? You guys have done a lot for our community, and we respect that, and anytime you guys have asked anything from us, we've always given you whatever we can to help you guys out, okay? We've been there for you, and will always be there, even if you're not here, we're always gonna be there for the veterans and our Veterans Council, okay? I hope you reconsider it, and Becky, you have no dog in this fight at all, other than, you know, you're sticking up with Rich, and...
Well, you know what?
But honestly, with your heart and everything you've put into it, I really hope you reconsider this, because you're a great person, and I really hope you stick with Veterans Council, because this town needs you, and, you know, we want you to stay. You know, as far as Mr. Demetrius, that's his decision, we're not making him resign, but you absolutely don't have to.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the compliment, but as any good soldier knows, you never leave a man behind, so I am resigning. And I will make arrangements with Mr. Ferrara at some point when you're available, Jim, to bring everything that I have. We just got the office after a year and a half, and most of the stuff is here by the dirty mops and the toilet bowl cleaner, so, but we want to return everything, we'll make an inventory list and have him sign off on it, and pass it off to everybody. It's certainly with regret.
Are you sure this is what you want to do?
It is, no, it's not, but I don't see any choice.
And I see, you're conflicted, you don't want to do this.
No, I don't want to do it.
We don't want you to do this.
I don't want him to have to resign either, he's a valuable member.
But that's his decision.
And this is hers.
But you're forcing us, you're forcing us in here.
Regrettably, I am resigning, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Kathleen Noldy on, from West Warren. You said most of those people should not be on there in that, most of them are coming on, is that fair? If you won't allow him to come on, are you gonna keep some on and kick the rest off? Where's that fairness?
Honestly, I can't say that all of them are gonna be removed, because we haven't debated it, we haven't brought this up as an agenda item to remove them off the agenda yet, so I can't say every single one of them is gonna be removed, and that's it, because you might have something, you know, Mr. Ihaaker might have a different view on that, say, "Well, I could understand the moderator," because the moderator doesn't, they don't address, you know, say permits, they're not addressing permits in the building department at all, they moderate a town meeting, so they don't have a dog in the fight, okay? There's nothing that they could do that would benefit them as far as permit-wise, or boards, or anything like that. Election officials, again, they don't approve permits, they don't sit on boards overseeing permits, they don't have anything to do with that status, so I could see where, okay, yeah, dog officer, I don't even know why a dog officer needs to be on there in the first place, that...
This should really be on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, and this should be on the agenda, it just, there's certain things where I could see where you could make a case for it, but I'm very hesitant to do it, because I don't think any employee should have it. But Mr. Beles is another board member, and Mr. Ihaaker is another member, and they might say, "Well, okay, we agree with this one person, I get voting," or they might put up a convincing argument, but, you know...
Do you think Rich would benefit from the town?
In a Conservation Commission status, it could.
He's not asking for conservation.
Well, what if he gives that up? What if he gives up the other two that he's on, and just for the Veterans Council? They are a great team, we have never, ever, in this town, had a team that did more for the veterans than these two people, and it's a shame that that's not the one that has a permit. Do you really think he's dishonest, or there's been problems in the past? If not, there's other people you said you probably wouldn't take off, so what is the big deal?
Again, you know, it's a slippery slope with some of these positions, and they ask.
There's no permits.
It wasn't asked about Veterans Council, it was Conservation.
We, no, we asked, go back to the minutes, we asked you, you voted in the minutes last time, we said, "I would resign from the other two, and consider Veterans Council," and you said, "No." Go back and look at your minutes, you have a short memory, are you okay?
Sometimes.
Rich, do you remember it?
Yes.
Could you correct him, please? On the record?
No, we did, he said, "I'll resign from Conservation, I'll resign from Cert, regretfully sorry, Jimmy," but...
And again, Cert gets permits too, right?
We wanted to stay on, have Veterans Council.
Well, Cert's not even on yet.
No, but he had made a comment at the last meeting, that many of these communities that he deals with, Cert members are special municipal employees. And we only asked, we would resign from the other two, keep Veterans Council, but it was a no.
Look pretty clear.
I'd like you to reconsider.
Yes, ma'am.
Judith Rice, 504 Cloyde Road, you remember that? Yes, I have a letter. It is with deep regret that I reinform the Veterans of Warren that we are resigning immediately from the Veterans Council. It is absolutely unavoidable, excuse me, it's very... Whereas a selectman of this town has stated that members are profiting from the town, the statement is absolutely false. We have been on this committee since it was created, and Becky and Rich are two of the most honest people and caring people you would want on a committee. If not for them, the following would not have, it never would have happened. Flags on the veterans' graves, Purple Heart Breakfast, Veterans Day, Reese Cross America, and Richard has taken time to assemble a bronze black plate on a granite stone to acknowledge the town's Purple Heart veterans, along with many more duties with no compensation. It is sad that because of these stages, the town will not have these events to honor our veterans. I only hope the next committee can stand up for what's written in this town, Judith Rice and Lloyd Rice.
You get your blowing twos.
Yep, have fun.
So, our understanding is you guys are resigning too?
No, there's no committee anymore.
Did you not listen?
I'm just making it clear. You know, it is what it is.
Kathleen Noldy, I'm getting... Is there any way that you could discuss this again and maybe reconsider?
We have to put it on the agenda.
No, we're not.
Well, put it on the agenda, because these two people are vital, there will be no more Veterans Council, like there wasn't there before. Becky and Rich have done a fantastic job for the veterans. We owe it to the veterans of this town to keep this committee intact as much as we can. A lot of the veterans, like Lloyd and Judy, no offense, they're getting older, they can't do what, I know, they can't do what some of these activities that they have done, and yes, they can help and all, they can't spearhead it, and nobody else wants to do it, and it's vital, because the veterans... And it's vital, because the veterans gonna go back where it was before, down the tubes. And I really, and I think everybody here, would like you to reconsider your decision.
Well, that's, that's not even on the agenda tonight, to reconsider your decision.
Can it be on the agenda for next time?
What's on the agenda is their resignation, that's the only thing we can look at, as far as this. We've talked about this a little bit, and we're getting way off topic here. We should be sticking to the resignation part, which was tied into some of this other. But that, that's, this, this is definitely gonna be coming up in the future. And I can tell you right now, we're gonna address a lot of these positions on here, because they shouldn't be on, as far as special municipal employees. There's no need for it. Yes, sir?
Yeah, my name is Jeff Nickerson, longtime, uh, sorry. Born and brought up in Warren, I now live in North Brookfield, Marine Corps veteran, and the Vice Commander of the American Legion of West Brookfield. I've worked very closely with Becky and Rich on Memorial Day, where we, we provide an honor guard every year. I'm also here on behalf of my dad, Don Nickerson, who couldn't be here tonight because of some health issues. My father has spent over fifty years in town government. He was the fire chief, he was a special police officer, he was on the Board of Selectmen, he was the chief, he was the chairman of the Master Plan Committee. And my dad wanted to be here so bad, because he knew that there was, there was a possibility that the Veterans Council was gonna be disbanded tonight because of the resignations. His name is also on the plaque that Richard donated, and the granite stone in Veterans Park, in West Warren. He's a Purple Heart veteran. And it's a travesty that you haven't given any opportunity to think about what we can do to correct this problem, instead of just saying, "Okay, well, that's the way it is, we're gonna put it on the agenda next time." They don't get a cent for what they do. And without them, it's just, you're doing a disservice to not only the veterans of this community, but you're doing a disservice to them as, as Veteran Council members. Shame on you, and shame on the town of Warren.
Thank you for that, and, you know, I understand your passion, and believe it, we want them to stay, okay? We'd like to keep them. Mrs. Serra has, she, she's making her decision, she has no need to resign. Mr. Demetrius, he has a technical issue that he's resigning under, because of the special municipal employee status.
Let's look for a solution.
There is a solution.
And all, all I could say-
The firefighters that are on the roster, I hope they come on?
A, a, a lot of these really shouldn't be on there.
Shouldn't them be on there?
Either all or nothing.
Again, I, I could see where some-
That was the slopes, like there were some than others.
Would make a case, but even then, they're not, they're not on a board or anything like that, so, it really doesn't matter.
What are we doing?
And I could see a case being made for that.
We made the case and you ignored it, it was, it's clear.
No. So, this, this will definitely be on an agenda, in the very near future. Probably say, next week, next meeting?
We're right now, we're just meeting, we're late, 10:17.
We're two weeks from today?
Yep. When's Derek back?
He's on the 25th, so he won't be here until the 25th.
Well, he should be here. So on the 24th?
You want it done on the 24th?
Yeah. Just make sure it's on the agenda for the 24th.
Will do.
You know, and, and, and to be honest, my, I'm more concerned with the status of conservation, okay? Conservation, they, they should not be special municipal employees, okay? Neither should planning board, okay? And I'm on planning board, and that should be removed from planning board, okay?
I've resigned from conservation, and we just asked for Veterans Council. How many times do we have to say that?
So, I don't know.
It's a dead issue, I'm ob-
Well, no, 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 don't go there.
Here's my resignation from the Conservation Commission, I have seventeen years of Conservation Commission. Here's my resignation from the CERT, eleven years on CERT, one of the founding, founding CERT persons involved, unit leader, and my resignation of Veterans Council. I hope anybody watching this thing pays close attention to how volunteers are treated in this town by our leaders of this town. We know it's a thankless job from the public, but you expect the people that you work with to have your back. And to be treated like this, to be singled out, it's, it's very, very discouraging.
You're, you're not being singled out.
Oh, you see it?
No, we're not.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, we're not.
You could say no all you want, but-
He brought up an issue that should be addressed for a lot of people.
You've had plenty of time to address it.
Well, now, now we have it on the, we have it on the 24th.
And rather than address it, you guys tried to skirt around it, you guys did. I want that to be on the record, you guys said, "We'll find a way around it," you guys.
So, when did I say that to you?
Jim Ferrara, how many times did you tell me? I'm, I, this is on the record, Jim, how many times did you call me? And you said, "I think we found a way around it, is there anybody else in your corporation that can do it?" There's no one in my corporation, it's a one-person corporation.
So, my, my understanding is, you said "we," okay? Did I say that to you? I didn't even talk to you about it.
That's burning.
The board? Derek, Rich, I talked to you, you were like-
Alcohol.
Alcohol, you were like, "Come to the meeting, we can straighten this out, this isn't how we want this to go." I talked to Derek, "Come to the meeting, we can straighten this out."
All right, Rich, now you're just making shit up out of thin air.
No, he's not, I was right there.
Yeah, okay.
And you tried to scoop, scoop out before we saw you, we nailed you.
Yeah, okay.
To talk to you.
Okay.
So, I, I honestly, Becky, I hope to God that you don't resign.
We just resigned, did you just hear us?
Again, you know, ju- just because one board member is resigning, doesn't mean everybody has to do it, okay? But we're also not gonna, you know, go over special municipal employee status tonight with anybody, because that has to be an agenda item, that has to be addressed in a separate way.
We'd like a vote, please.
Go.
All right.
Well, these would, these normally-
Those are separate agenda, they would have to be next to each other.
Yeah, these would have to be sent over to the town clerk, and the town clerk would have to stamp them in, and then, you know, let us know.
Well, you ended up for this, for this board of health?
Yes, it was, it was brought in, brought into, for Lori.
So what's the process, that goes to the town clerk?
It goes to the town clerk.
She has a copy.
She has a copy.
But because it was on the agenda, we can do Becky and Rich, if you want.
I can get, I don't send one to her, so I'd be happy to type one up and send it to her.
Well, we have the copy now, right?
Okay.
This, this is just for, oh yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Can you pass those, so I have to do all of those?
No. You can only do Rich and Becky.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Rebecca Serra from the Veterans Council, and Rich Demetrius from CERT, Conservation Commission, and Veterans Council.
I second that, all in favor?
Rich Ihaker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Resignation is accepted. And then just make sure that, um, they get a copy of this. Yeah. Can I come back to you?
Uh, yeah, for the record, we just gotta go over the record.
Jim, I'll be in touch with you, okay?
Okay.
We'll set up a time.
Yep.
Have you taken Fridays off, or?
No, I work Fridays.
No, I know, but, um, you're all-
I'll be here tomorrow, I have a, a meeting at 11:00 with the schools, but if you wanna come after or before that?
No, I'm not running like Fridays.
All right.
But I'll, I'll set up a time with you to, to return everything. Great.
You're on, thank you. Okay, next thing on the agenda is review, a request from the Emergency Management Director to use $3,015 of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA for the purpose of replacing the batteries for the digital signboard that is used to display the town messages to the public. Jimmy, you're up. How you doing tonight?
I'm working, Director, James. Come, uh, you guys, the question of that, uh, the amount of the state, uh, water, to replace the batteries in that signboard, uh, you sound big up a little bit. The signboard was probably, uh, don't, uh, it was given to the town by the Homeland Security, probably early 2000s, I'm not quite sure that actually, uh, time. Accepted to the town, basically all the different departments here, police, fire, groups, schools, program messages up on it for downtown meetings. It's been used, the batteries are quite tired in it, had to be plugged in to run over the winter. Got ahold of this company, Brank, Brank Corp. Came out, tested the, uh, charging system and everything, seemed to be okay. Comes back down to the batteries. So they gave an estimate on better batteries. AGM batteries, which are absorbic glass MAP batteries. They're basically, you don't have to check fluids in them, no maintenance to, just in a, they're a little more pricey, but they last longer, they, they fit this scenario. They get charged by solar, and then they run the message board.
So, the signboard just needs new batteries, and the battery's gonna cost $3,015.
No, sorry, $2,060, right?
$2,000, yes, part of it is for work that's been completed. We actually might get a, possibly a credit back if they change to three new batteries, you might get a credit back for the current battery that's running it now. So it might be a little cheaper than that, but it's up to that amount.
Okay. And how much?
So, uh, for me, it, uh, right now, available in ARPA unallocated is $27,612.93.
The signboard gets us, we use it a lot for a lot of messages in town, putting up a lot of information. We don't have anything else, um, for a big display in the community, it's the only thing we got.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm good with it.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, just, you know, wanna be careful with the local money, we're-
It's getting low now.
Yeah.
We're running out of those funds.
And so you don't have a budget to deal with this stuff, or?
Not, basically, we have the whole entire budget right now.
And, and just, just, just for clarification, you, Jim, you had the original amount to cover, right? You had $955 to cover?
Oh, that's, well, that's gonna be inside this.
Yeah, that's gonna be inside that, but you took, for the work that's already done, you, you, if, if this wasn't approved tonight, you would still have fun to cover that, the work that's already done.
Yeah.
This is, you're asking since, to cover it all, right? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
All right, I'll make a motion to use $3,015 from American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purpose of replacing the batteries for the digital signboard, and take care of the current invoice for work done.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Rich Ihaker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, sir.
So Jim, once you have all the final invoices, will you just give me a copy?
Okay.
So next thing on the agenda, discussion of possible vote to accept the state matching grant from the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the fiscal year of 2022, Volunteer Fire Assistance Program, that has a $2,450 town match. Okay, Chief, is you?
Yes, good evening, I apologize, I was a little late, I was in a mutual aid fire. So this is the, a grant that the board allowed me to apply for, about, about, about a year ago now. We've been waiting to hear on it, we were recently awarded the grant, so we need to formally accept it. It's through the Department of Conservation and Recreation. It's directly for volunteer and call fire departments to deal with brush fire and forest fire incidents. We plan to purchase helmets with that and update it. Currently, we have, you know, turn, coats and pants that are within date that we got off of the same type of grant before, but we never had enough money to upgrade the helmets. Helmets are just about ten years older, a little older, so they're almost past their date. At this point, I'd like to upgrade those helmets with this grant. And it is a matching grant, so the town will put in $2,450 to match, and we, we'll be able to spend the money.
And we have, we already have a budget for the matching grant, so we'll be with that, so. All right, um, do you have anything to say?
Nope.
Right, so the money's coming out of that matching grant.
The matching grant fund, not, not our fund.
Yep. All right, I'm, ready?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the matching grant from the Department of Conservation and Recreation for FY22 Volunteer Fire Assistance Program, where we match for $2,450.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Rich Ihaker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, there should be a contract with that.
Yep.
By the board, they got something, as soon as they have that, I'll send that in and make sure they have a copy.
They don't need to sign this, right?
Oh, that's right, the board authorized me to sign the contract for that, so-
That was originally last year.
Yes, my apologies, thank you very much.
Next thing on the agenda, discussion of possible votes, and signing of the acceptance of the ambulance abatement for the third and fourth quarters for FY23. Chief, you're up.
So these are things we've done regularly throughout the years, to clean up the books at the end of the fiscal year. We need to account for all the monies that come in and out, this is something that we have to do regularly. All services that provide ambulance, or all agencies provide ambulance service, have to do the same thing for accounting purposes, this is monies that we can't legally collect from ambulance collection bills because of, of state law and insurance premiums and things. So, for instance, you know, if someone was billed a $2,000 ambulance bill, just to round up, you know, if they're a Medicare or Medicaid patient, they're only, they only will pay a certain amount of that bill. So we have to write off the rest of that amount, we cannot, we cannot balance bill that patient due to state law and stuff. So it's monies that we just have to account for.
So on one of them, you have, for March, bad debt?
Well, so bad debt, bad debt is, is anything that we have decided, like, from time to time, I'll go through the list of collect, people that we're trying to collect from. Obviously, if the person is deceased, or there's another issue there, I will, from time to time, write off those amounts. Those amounts under bad debt are added to the, what we can't legally collect from, from state law. So say we have, you know, there's always an ongoing revolving list of people they're still trying to get monies from. So I have the option of, you know, reporting that to one of the credit collection, you know, sites or something like that. Through our, through our billing department, we can do that, you know, they, they will do a hard press on the person, they'll be able to do that, but generally speaking, obviously, I'm, I'm not, I don't think the town's in the business of creating a hardship for people in certain, most circumstances, being obviously if someone's elderly or they, or of low income, there's a way for them to apply for a hardship application if they have outstanding bills. So if they do, and I look at that hardship application, things are verified that, yes, indeed, you know, they're on a, a set income or something like that, we don't wanna create that hardship for them, for something like that. So at that time, we'll write that off, and that's what that, that category is.
Okay, so this one, this particular one, is it one or several?
Which one are you talking about?
Nine, nine, nine thousand, six hundred and one dollars.
March.
For March.
Now, those are a combination of several of them, yes, that's not one ambulance bill. That's, that's a few bills that we've gone over and looked at, we've exhausted all, all aspects of collection at that point, or the person is, is no longer, is no longer alive, they may have, you know, so we, we write off those amounts.
And what about June, where you had a negative sixteen?
That was one that they, from what I'm being told, they were, when I called them, that was something that they ended up collecting, and they had to account back into the account for that. So it ended up being a collection that they were able to do, that's why that number is a little bit off, as opposed- That's why that number is a little bit off as opposed to normal. So sometimes those things happen, you know? Uh, like I said, you know, we're, we try very hard to keep our collection rate up and we, you know, continue to increase that for, you know, throughout the years. We hover anywhere between, you know, in a, in a given year, $250,000 to $300,000 worth of collections for ambulance calls that we go out and do and everything. But obviously, there are some cases where we just can't collect, you know, uh, you know, there are cases, like I said, Medicare, Mass Health, Medicaid, where it's a very small percentage that we're legally allowed to, to, to collect. You know, if we have a insurance company, that may be a top-tier insurance company like, you know, uh, uh, you know, Fallon or other ones like that, we can get a full amount for that, you know, if they, if it's an approved thing. But there's, you know, we live in a, a smaller town that's not, you know, super on the affluent side, so a lot of people don't have that type of insurance. So we just, we need to make sure that we account for that money that we can't collect.
Okay. None of these are people that just don't wanna pay?
No, no, they, they, our, our billing company is a very well-known billing company. There are hundreds of fire departments that use them across the Commonwealth and the Northeast in general, so that they are, they're not new to the game, they've been doing this for a long time. They do everything they possibly can to, to collect it. I mean, at the end of the day, I don't like to let that list get too, too long because it's just, you know, it, it becomes a massive amount of money. So from time to time, again, I take a, a real deep dive into it. If it's somebody that's not from town, if it's somebody there, we go the extra length to make sure we keep at them to, to get that money. But if it's, you know, if it's a case where, you know, it's a hardship case or something, or it's a resident in town especially, that may be having a, a tough time, we certainly take that into consideration.
No? All right, I'll make a motion to accept the ambulance abatements for the third and fourth quarter of FY '23.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Rich I Hucker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is discussion and review of written quotes for proposed building improvements at the senior center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As the board, uh, is, is aware, um, at town meeting, there was an allotment of $30,000 for improvements that were, uh, to be made either at the Shepherd Municipal Building or at the, um, senior center, and these are building improvements. One, um, ongoing building improvement project that has been talked about at the senior center, um, has been advocated by its director, Sharon Millie, um, is either painting or siding of the front half portion of the building down at the, um, senior center. If you look at the, the front half of the building here, thank you, Rich, um, this particular facade in the front, um, is all painted, um, and the paint is, is, is peeling drastically, so much as to, um, you know, some of the wood is starting to rot, um, on, on, on the paint. And you, you can see that, um, if you go to the next picture, Rich, um, on the side also of the building, um, there's significant peeling and deterioration of the paint, um, on the side of the building. And if you wanna keep going to the next one? So that's a little bit more of a, if you close up on that one, that's the other side. Right to the left of that is, is, is the, uh, is the addition, uh, a recent addition not too long ago that the town had put on. That is, um, actually, um, it's a, it's a, it's a like clapboard, uh, it's like a painted, uh, siding. So at some point, um, that siding will have to be painted. It's unfortunate that the town didn't put vinyl in the back there. Again, you know, our model should be maintenance-free for as long as we can, um, you know, own these properties, um, or as limited maintenance as possible. So that's like a clapboard, we wouldn't be touching any of that in this proposed project, but this project, um, would be focusing in on the peeling of the paint. Again, um, it would focus in on, on power washing, the entire, uh, existing, um, cinder block, um, and existing, um, vinyl siding. Some of the vinyl siding there is, is okay. It, it's a mismatch, you have clapboard in the back, you have some cinder blocks, you have paint, uh, that is peeling, and then you have some vinyl siding that is okay, like on that, uh, that, that, that cubby that goes into the, uh, that portico that goes into the, um, senior center, that's actually vinyl siding, it's, it's, it's okay, it just needs to be cleaned of any moss or, or of anything like that, mold that could be growing on you. So it needs to be cleaned. Gutters, um, it, it appears as though that some of the gutters might have been replaced at some point, some of them, uh, clearly have not. They're not all consistent, some of them are, uh, a different level of gutter, um, from a two, from a, a six-inch gutter down to a three-inch gutter. Some are commercial grade, some are Home Depot grade, some of them are not connecting. It really needs to be replaced, um, all around with seamless new gutters. If you wanna go to the next picture, Rich. The back, this is the, uh, the concrete wall that needs to be power washed. Obviously, it's the moss and the, and the, the, uh, from the ground, from the grass that just continues to, 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 to beat off a bit, as well as dirt, um, and that just needs to be, you know, uh...
So the gutter's not attached, they are?
Yeah, the gutter's not attached in that one, yeah.
We're gonna get those gutters that can be attached?
Oh, right here.
Yeah, so new gutters have to, there's new gutters that, that were proposing to be installed, and they're all gonna be attached.
Okay. And I noticed on the other side of the building, on the first pictures, there was some, um, there was some stuff attached to the building that probably don't need to be there anymore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like here? Um, this picture?
The next one. Where are they? What's that pipe going to, yeah, can you zoom in?
Oh, this is probably, well, that's electrical. I don't know what this is.
That's from, to some, uh, antenna on the building, I, I'm not, I'm not sure with that.
Is the antenna even being used anymore?
Uh, I, 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 I'm not sure if they use it for their radio, the van light there.
It's a what?
It's a spotlight.
Oh, parking, parking lot light.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, they have a radio out there for the bus.
The bus.
They can talk to the van.
All right. And there's a pipe coming up?
Yeah.
From the ground right there, too?
Well, that's the, that's the exhaust, must be for gas, gas line, exhaust.
The furnace?
Yeah, if there's anything that doesn't need to be there anymore, have that just taken out. There's a bunch of wires that are hanging over the, uh, you know, electrical service too, that are just hanging there.
So, um, wanna, if, Rich, if you can put in the next one?
I wanna go all the way.
Oh, that one, if you can blow that one up.
So, just, is this the back of the kitchen?
That is the back of the new addition.
Which is the kitchen, right?
Yeah, probably, yeah. So this is the side right here, um...
The east side?
Yes, this was, this side would be facing, um, one of the direct abutters, um, on the east. This, obviously, again, the cinder block, um, it needs to be, uh, cleaned, it needs to be, uh, removed, the paint, it needs to be, uh, new paint needs to be applied. The yellow door, we're looking to get that, that, that painted as well, uh, to match the rest of the building. Next one, Rich?
What's this thing?
That's part of a gutter at, at, at one point.
Oh, okay. And then this is AC down here?
AC is down there, yep.
Okay. Cause, and there's, is that clavert or vinyl?
That's vinyl, actually, up there.
Okay. It's like a mishmash of.
Hot projects, things.
Yeah. So that is the other side of the building, that's paint. And, and, and on the side of that, that building to the east, um, right over there, that is vinyl over there. So we would just be looking to, uh, power wash that, uh, the top needs, it needs a new skirt for the top, um, needs, needs to be addressed over there, as well as the gutters. Next picture, Rich?
What's that thing?
That's a alarm of some sort.
Okay.
I don't know if it works still. You can see a little bit more of the gutter, um, coming, coming apart there from, from the, um, from the seam there. Some of more of the, the peeling of the paint there.
Looks like rot over here, it's probably getting in behind the soffit or the, whatever that is.
So, I, I've been in the process of, of, of developing, uh, quotes for this project. I'm waiting on one more quote, okay? I have two already. I'm waiting on one more written quote. Uh, I just met a contractor there today, this afternoon, he was delayed, he was supposed to come last week, he got delayed. I should have the final quote by next week, hopefully, from this gentleman, um, and then I'll have three quotes that I could, you know, talk and bring to the board, um, with. But this is a project that, you know, on top of the, on top of the vinyl siding, we were, we were looking to put, uh, obviously, some foam behind it as some additional installation, like a, a three-fourths foam behind the vinyl, so they would have, um, they would have the, um, the additional installation, insulation, uh, as well as, uh, you know, some, a foam board behind it for some additional, um, uh, protection, um, and then the vinyl siding, and then obviously, painting, new gutters, um, power washing, uh, in, in generally, uh, cleanup of the exterior of the building. And, and to try to dress up the front of the building. It was talked about, uh, at the senior center of doing the front half of the building, um, in like a, like a royal blue color, uh, for vinyl siding, and then the rest being, you know, that pearl white around the edges, so the building would, would have a little bit of a distinction, you know, from, from the outside, um, from the building. The seniors were really, were really liking that idea, um, and that, that color scheme, to try to dress up the building a little bit more, making it a little bit more inviting and welcoming, um, and then, um, also cleaning up, uh, some of the, of the porch inside as well. So, um...
So there's a lot of work.
There's a lot of work, and it's...
What's it, what's it gonna cost?
Well, I mean, I, I, again, I, I don't have all of the, the quotes as of yet, you know, but, um, you know, it's a, it's a pretty involved, you know, project.
And where would the money come from, I guess, is that per budget?
So, we have, I, I, what I would be proposing would be to, to use exhaust, the, the more, the, the article that we have at town meeting that gave us, you know, that, um, $30,000 for building improvements for, um, the, um, Shepherd and for the senior center. Putting a majority of that in there, hoping that maybe it would cover the entire part, it may, it may not, um, depending on the costs. And if, you know, if there's any inequities, we would have to discuss as to, you know, you know, how, you know, what could we do to finish this project? You know, it's a, it's a pretty involved project, uh, but it's a bold project to protect the building, uh, to, uh, to protect the, you know, the, 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 the regular maintenance of that building. There has been, um, some calls, as, as the board is aware, um, to address the, the, um, air conditioning unit onto the side there, of putting up a fence, um, you know, from one of the neighbors over there. You know, that's something that we could also do, uh, that's not part of this quote, this would have to be something separately, um, and, you know, that's supposedly would take care of the sound issues. Again, it's, it, there's a lot to just putting up a fence, but, you know, we would have to do like, you know, some survey work to see if, you know, where the property lines is, are, uh, you know, there's no guarantee that it would, you know, correct all of the problems of, of, of the potential sound that the generator or the air conditioner makes, uh, from one of the abutters, uh, you know, quality of life concerns. You know, that's something that we can, you know, also talk about, um, at another date. But this project, um, is probably, uh, one of a, a priority project to get this, um, building stabilized somewhat with the exterior part of it.
Okay. I'm good with it.
I will work on getting the final quote, um, and I will present it at the next board meeting.
Yeah, we definitely wanna make sure we spruce up the senior center.
And then what we...
Looking a little beat up lately.
What we will also do at that same time is, there's already money that has been reserved for the dishwasher. Director Millie also has money for a, um, for some upgrades with the stove. So we're hoping to get those all into a package so that we could do those at the same time, and so that we'll have a really big project that's done over there, the exterior and some upgrades in the kitchen.
And she get her dishwasher yet?
No, that would be, we're doing that with the bidding of the stove, cause we wanna see if we can get a, 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 a better price if we package it all together.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, sir?
That's it for this particular project.
Well, thank you very much.
And I'll report on this on the next meeting. Hopefully by then, I'll have the final quote.
Next thing on the agenda is discussion on full-page meeting notice.
You wanna talk about it? I mean, you came up with it for the most part.
You'll find in your packet, you have two different ones. I took the meeting that we had today and put it on, um, the two different ones so you can see what they would look like. And you, you notice, if you can see this. I had town clerk stamp it, so you can see why I moved these all over here to the side, so you can see that that's stamped, so that's one of them, and then this is the other one.
Why are there two stamps? They're both the same, date time received.
Because they have to stamp them twice by law.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know. I just know what, she told me I had to have on here, I had to have this up here, the notice thing, and I gotta have two date stamps and a place for her to sign and underline whether it's her or Wesley. So, that was her input. The thing that I think we were trying to get is to be able to see what board it is.
I think that's, yeah. I would do that over the, I mean, the logo looks nice, but it takes up a lot of room, and it's just, you're gonna need the room, and I think this is more visible. The blue, the blue thing at the top, I think that's better. Can we ditch the colons on all these? And just do a period?
Sure.
Or leave it open?
Either way.
Yeah, I guess a period.
I can't leave it open. The computer doesn't like that, yells at me.
Yeah, yeah, just...
So just put a period?
Period. I mean, open meeting, you don't need anything, pledge of allegiance, you don't need anything, but then the, the lists. Yeah, two periods. Uh, like number 18 is fine, next meeting with the colon, that's fine. What, what do you think, Jim? Is this better?
Totally up to you guys.
Yeah, but I mean, in terms of requirement of like making something legible and, um, you know, so people really know what's going on, right?
Yeah, I mean, either one would work.
So I, you know, I, I like... I like them both. I, I kinda like the second one a little more, because I think when it puts it down, it looks, looks like it's actually given more information on the one page.
I think the font is smaller.
Yeah, the font is smaller, but you, you got the Zoom link in there and all that stuff. On the second one, you have the Zoom link on, but it doesn't say Zoom link or anything like that, it just has the link.
Well, we easily put the Zoom link word in there, that's...
Yeah, you should have that, yeah. Otherwise, people may not know what...
It just looks like, what, what link is that?
Yeah, I agree.
You know?
Okay.
Where, where the other one says Zoom, um, link for meeting information, and it has the ID number and all that stuff in there. And it has the ID number and all that stuff in there. So you have it in there on the second one.
So you want, on the one that has the blue, you want to put.
But the second one, it seems like you really cram a lot into one space with the header. Because the header's really big. And that's really pushing everything down on the page.
On the second one.
Yeah.
Right. And then if you do like, you're gonna have to do that for planning board or for conserva-, right? It's just gonna get bigger and bigger. So I would, I mean, the first one is a little more streamlined.
It is, but they, again, you look at the second one and it says, "The meeting will be conducted in person and remotely." It has all that information in it. If you stop putting that on the second one.
No, you'll be fine.
You're gonna shrink up everything?
Yeah, she could shrink it up.
I mean, this whole, this upper part up here, these three lines do not need to be that big.
Yeah.
We could easily shrink that down. It has to be there by law, but it doesn't have to be that big.
Because I don't think you really need the whole header on there and all that stuff. It's a meeting notice.
Yeah.
You know, it's being posted out there, but.
The other thing, I would say.
Some of that information should be there.
Ditch the link, the HTTPS. No one's gonna sit there and type that into their computer. They need the meeting ID and the password or the phone number.
No, I think you have to put it on there.
You have to put the link there.
You have to put it on.
Why would you put the?
Why? Because it's a meeting post, it's posting.
I know, but as long as you have the Zoom meeting ID and the password, you can get in.
Yeah, you can get app a link on there.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
All right.
Because we're holding.
Because you can sit there and like type that.
We're holding it with alternate means and you have to post it up on there.
Right.
So it gives other people options because they might want.
Yeah, but.
I just want a copy of the notice. I don't go online. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna go on your website. I want a copy of the notice, so.
Wait, I'm gonna.
It's the official.
I'm just saying, get rid of that link. Keep the meeting ID and the dial-by.
The quick link where you can.
I'm saying, get rid of this.
But you can't, you can't click on it.
Well, I know you can't click on it. What if somebody was gonna, they'd type it in there, hey, that's the meeting link.
Yeah, but they can just type in the meeting ID and passcode, which would be way better.
Just wanna make sure with Jeff that if we're gonna be holding Zoom.
Yeah, I can check with him, yeah. Yeah, just, yeah.
We just run it by him, see if we have to have to put that or if we could just do the meeting ID.
So if you put, you know, Zoom information and move the meeting ID over and the dial-by over a little bit, you don't even have to put that New York thing in there. I mean, you can get rid of a lot of US, I mean, it's obviously a US number.
Okay.
You know, so yeah, I think you could cut a lot of extra stuff out of here and fit it into one line. It'll be more compact.
All right. Got it.
The next meeting.
Yeah. And if you want, send me a proof and we'll go through it and you can present it again.
You can send it individually.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send it individually.
It looks good.
I do like them though. Good job.
Thanks. And I have it for every board that has a meeting. I've already done this one.
The blue one, yeah, that's good.
For every board that has a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Rich.
I just don't know the Zoom link on every board's meeting. If it's the same as ours or if it's a different one for planning board.
It is.
Okay. So I would need, well, I guess they can put it in if I just give them the link.
Yeah. I can give you the Zoom. It's on the website. If you go to planning board page.
Okay.
It's on here.
All right. So this is the next meeting.
All right. Moving on?
Yep.
Okay, warrants and bills. Warrants are first.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants for FY twenty-three. Number one twenty-one payroll, twenty dollars. Number one twenty-two vendor, forty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Number one twenty-three vendor, four hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following warrants for FY twenty-four. Payroll number three, fifty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Payroll number four, fifty thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Payroll number five, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. Payroll number six, fifty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Vendor number four, hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Vendor number five, eighty-five thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Vendor number six, hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Vendor number seven, seventy-five thousand sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following bills for FY twenty-three. National Grid, hundred eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Turley, fifty-two dollars.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following bills for FY twenty-four. MMA, nine hundred fifty-three dollars. WB Mason, two hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Northeast IT, thirty-three hundred fifty-four dollars. Power Products System, six hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. True Value, thirty dollars ninety-five cents. Tumi Water Service, hundred and fifty dollars. National Grid, one hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Horizon, one hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. The Phone Cleaning Service, thirteen hundred fifty dollars. Amazon, two hundred thirty dollars eighty-five cents. Kelco, one hundred thirty-four dollars. Merlin Leasing, eleven hundred seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Paul Sheppardson Electric, thirteen hundred dollars. Two for American Tower, each twenty-two hundred dollars. SBA Structures, thirty-four hundred dollars five and fifty-four cents. Hamden, Hamden?
What is that?
That's the other tower in this.
Okay.
It should be Hamden Communications.
Hamden Communications Corporation.
Was it?
Hamden Communications.
Hamden Communications for nine thousand dollars. Central Mass Regional Planning, fifteen hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Comcast Business, twenty dollars thirty cents.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously. What did I say? Can you reread that?
No. Not a chance.
All right. So, we're on another page here. Okay, so the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes for July sixth, twenty twenty-three and July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously for both the minutes. Town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. It's been a busy couple weeks since the last time we have met. Just to recap on some of the things that we've been working on here at the municipal building. This week we had, on Wednesday was interviews for the assessor's clerk position. There was approximately thirty-five applicants for the assessor's clerk position that got narrowed down to eleven. That the Board of Assessors and Assistant Assessor wanted to look at. The eleven applicants that were called for interviews. Six of them showed for an interview out of the eleven. And there were, out of those six, there were some really impressive candidates that, you know, had, you know, some had some municipal experience and others did not, but had some pretty impressive resumes. So from that six, it's now been brought down to three. And so I would anticipate, I think the assessors wanted to meet on the fifteenth of August and just try to, you know, have some second interviews. And, you know, to rank their choices and get those in front of the selectmen, you know, for decision shortly thereafter. So that process took all day though, Wednesday. It was, you know, spread out, you know, every half hour for the eleven candidates. And it was, it was pretty, pretty good to see that we've been getting, you know, people that have been applying for, you know, this is a part-time position. It's nineteen hours, you know, so it's pretty refreshing that people are starting to respond to, you know, some positions that we have posted. So that, that took place this past Wednesday. I did reach out to Whip City Fiber. Whip City Fiber has tentatively set up a time for us to meet and tour their facility on Thursday of August thirty-first at ten in the morning. If, that was a date that they had thrown out there. I don't know if this would be workable for the board. I said that I would let them know.
As of right now, I can do it.
I don't think I have any, I'm open.
Okay.
You're good?
I can let Andrew Shore know that we will be coming. He'd asked, you know, how, you know, who else, you know, from the town, you know, would be coming. I said, I'll check with Slough and see if they wanted to, you know, how they wanted to work.
You know Derek's gonna wanna go.
Yeah, so we'll post the meeting.
Post it for all of us.
All of us. And we'll be, we'll be in Westfield, so we'll get the, you know, like their headquarters in Westfield.
You post it as a site visit.
Right.
So that had transpired. And on August first, we had our official kickoff of our feasibility study. So it was a pretty exciting day here. I know that Slough and I Hocker was there. And Chief, Chief Mallett was there. And the Chief LaVoy unfortunately was out sick that day, as was our building commissioner. But it was very, very productive meeting. And we're building the Chief LaVoy about this after the meeting. It was refreshing to see that the company that was selected, Tech Town Architects, the vast experience with dealing with municipal public safety complexes, the municipal complexes throughout Massachusetts and beyond. I mean, they had, they do work in Connecticut, Rhode Island, New York. But a majority of their work is in Massachusetts. And so they have some extensive knowledge. And where we had left the meeting, Jeff, who was gonna be the town's point person and who was also an owner of the company, he is, he is going to be compiling some dates to have our departments, police, fire, municipal building, to set up dates to meet with the chiefs, myself, to do some analysis as to space analysis for their needs, talk to their, talk to their employees, talk with the chiefs, and to kind of gauge as to how much exact space is going to be needed for this potential project. Again, they're going to be separating all of it. So if, you know, if the town can only afford to do the public safety complex at this time, then we'll have that number. If the town can do a whole complex with municipal, we'll have that number. We'll have it all separated. He did mention, you know, archaeological digs, you know, he's gonna look into that. I know that was a sticking point for the chairman. You know, he mentioned that at our meeting. So that was critically important for that part of the process. I think that the entire group, you know, their first, you know, when Jeff was there, he said, well, does the, does the, does the town have any, you know, preferred sites, you know, that they own, currently own, lean in, you know, that they really wanna look at? And I think everybody in the room was talking about the lane next to the highway garage that the town owns as a first primary option. And so that they're going to look at that. And then if the board has any other recommendations, I know there was something that was mentioned on Main Street, but if they have any other recommendations, you know, then we can, you know, move forward, you know, with giving them to Jeff and to the rest of the group. But the first part of the stage is going to be doing a space needs assessment, looking at what exactly is going to be the need. And to be planning for that need for the future. So, you know, we're not gonna be a penny wise and a pound foolish yet. What we're going to be doing is looking to, if there's a need to possible growth in the future as the town continues to grow, we're gonna have that already planned out here. So the next people that are in our seats, you know, ten, fifteen years from now, are not have to worry about both scratching their heads. We don't, we don't have enough space to accommodate these, you know, in the domain. So we're gonna have that planned out ahead of time and look at that. So it was a pretty exciting day. I thought it was pretty productive. I don't know if the chief wants to mention anything on that.
I think he hit the nail on the head with everything that he said. It was a very encouraging to talk with him and how experienced his company was.
Rich? Yeah, I mean, you covered everything.
Okay.
It seemed like a nice guy.
You guys aren't giving too much input here. I wanna know more.
Well, no, I was just, I, you know, the guy's very likable. He's, I think he's a straight shooter. So I think we're well served by this company.
And they understand the vision. We're not looking to build something today, but something that they can grow into.
Correct.
All right.
And I think he's gonna be realistic about like expectations and what we can do and.
And put a plan together. This is, this is a phase one plan that, that, you know, will help us educate the town's residents as to what the costs are, right? You know, you know, we could say, well, it's gonna cost twenty million bucks or it may cost ten million bucks or it may cost fifteen million bucks. But this will be an actual, you know, from their calculations, their architects, their engineers, that they can tell us exactly, you know, in today's dollar, what it would cost. And, you know, what are potential savings of combining these buildings together? You know, savings on utilities, insurance, maintenance, upkeep, you name it. You know, what is all of that? So that the town meeting members can be educated on the whole process.
Well, one thing we talked about as we sat in Jim's voluminous office, right? Is the size of these rooms.
Yeah.
I mean, this is perfect, but Jim's office is actually maybe a little bigger than this or about the same size. One person, you've gotta heat and cool that room. This is not an efficient building. Yeah, your office, I mean, any office in here is almost too big.
This is a school.
Yeah.
It's not a municipal building. Just like the old town hall is not a police station.
Right.
It's not built for that. That's not what it was designed for and that's not the architecture for it, you know? They have unique needs. It's just like taking the fire department and just sticking them in the garage. Yeah, they could work out of it, but it's not their needs. They, it's not what they need to do to do their job, you know? So this is very encouraging and, you know, I, I'm very happy to see what the future is gonna bring with all of this and, you know? You just, you told them, no matter how much the chief demands, he ain't getting a hundred thousand square foot office, right?
No, and the company realizes that they have to, you know, you know, whatever they find, they're gonna present it to the community. And whatever their study is, they're gonna educate the community. I mean, they, they were just talking when we were at the meeting, you know, the guy last night, previous to our meeting, he was in the town of Westfield or the city of Westfield, you know, pitching, you know, their new public safety complex and how, you know, some of the concerns out there was that the public safety complex that they were proposing was on school property and that some of the residents didn't want it on school property. And so, but it drew a lot of discussion and, you know, these are the potential issues that will come up during this process that, you know, we may not be able to prepare for, you know, if, you know, if there's, you know, some, you know, issue that, you know, a neighbor or a resident may have with having a public safety complex next to them or in, right behind them, that, you know, these are the real challenges that you see normally, you know, during the debate of something like this. So I think that was just to give us some awareness of, you know, this happens in communities that, you know, there could be a disagreement of where the site could possibly. that, you know, there could be a disagreement of where the site could possibly be.
Well, no matter what we do, there's gonna be always some sort of opposition out there and we just gotta better educate everybody and, you know, this is a thing that has to happen. They, they have, that building's on borrowed time and it's gonna cost way more money to fix that up than it is to build a new building that we can grow into in the next twenty years or thirty years, you know? I don't know. But yeah, awesome. Anything else, sir?
Yes, so also in your, in your book, the, on, on number eleven, I put it in there after the fact, was, Karen, you should have a copy of this in your, your back too, was the response for the Department of Labor before the police station. So, you remember at the last meeting, there was eight items that we had to go through and, and get addressed in a time period for our, for our, our written warning at the, at the police station from the Department of Labor. So, item number one, the item has been closed out on July twenty-seventh, so that item is dropped. You know, the basement stairway, damaged stair tread, we, we, you know, we responded back, the item has been closed. The basement stairway missing right hand, right hand side rail, that item has been closed. You know, we, we responded to that. Item number three, the left hand side rail, dimension's not sufficient to provide for grasping surface, that item has been closed, we responded. Item number four, the flexible cables installed and in use as a substitute for fixed wiring, that item has been, you know, we, we added more outlets, that, that item has been resolved as of twenty-seventh. Exit signs, we recited five and six. Those items have been closed and resolved. Personal protective equipment, written hazardous assessment from our original conversation two weeks ago, that item has been resolved on August first. We provided that, that information to them. For item number eight, I explained to Mr. McKeel, who was our inspector, as to how the board wanted to proceed with this. And, and, and it was the town's goal of, of trying to get the services and enlist the services of a professional industrial hygienist in the future. And it's our goal to continue to have ongoing trainings. And so, Mr. McKeel was, was saying, well, can you, you know, when do you think you could get the, you know, industrial hygienist? And I said, well, I said, Mr. McKeel, we are always looking for ways to improve trainings for all our employees. The industrial hygienist, we have an account of what we have right now. Jeremy has an account of all the chemicals that we have on the safety data sheets. There's three pages of them. I said, this industrial hygienist will be doing more or less an audit of currently what we have. We may have missed some things. It's not like we haven't done this. Jeremy and, and the highway team have a list of, of, of all the safety data sheets and the products that we have the safety data sheets for. I provided you that. So, he, he understood that a little bit more. This was more of an audit that we could do. This is our goal to try to get this industrial hygienist to look at the bigger picture at some point. We don't have, I said, we're a small community. We don't have the funds right now to hire this industrial hygienist. He understood that. And he understands and he said that the goal for the town of getting this is admirable. So, he, he thought it was very good. I do have a, I said, you know, I made a suggestion to him to get this number eight matter resolved for us by August thirty-first. Next week, on Wednesday, I have sewer and highway staff. Jeremy's gonna do an impromptu training for a half an hour on how to read a safety data sheet and where they're located in his office, so that those two critical departments that handle a lot of this, a lot of this stuff knows how to, to interact with that. And I'm going to have an attendance sheet and it's mandatory that all the employees go to that in those two departments. And if I provide this attendance sheet and this gets done, this matter will be resolved.
Okay.
So, then the entire case will be resolved on the town's.
I do think there's a, there's an online training that people can do too?
Correct.
So, and I don't know if it's free on the state website?
Some of them are, some of them are not. And then some are free, are obviously free for, free through Maya, our insurance provider. And I always circulated, when I see those pop up to the departments and encourage them to do that.
That'd be a good one, if they have something on that, as far as has, has this waste communication and how to read a, a safety data sheet and all that. An awareness, general awareness that, hey, you can't, you can't just dump something down the drain.
Right.
You know, it has to be disposed of properly and all that stuff, so. That's something chief probably could teach.
I mean, yeah, I can do, I mean, Jeremy, I believe, I, I wanna say he holds a title in town. I, I don't know exactly what it is for that stuff. Like, I'm the infection control person. I think he handles most of that stuff, so it would probably be better for him to do it if it was gonna be open to other employees, because he can handle a lot of that stuff too. I think the school also has someone designated for that too, I think. I'd have to look, but everybody should know how, you know, know where the safety stuff is. Training is critical in, in any of these things. And, you know, I'm gonna, I, I've already reached out to Mr. McKeel's team to see if, you know, if we could have some, some state officials from the Department of Labor come out and give us a tutorial for all the staff. And, and so, you know, that's, you know, that's, that's critical. Karen's been very helpful with trying to get all the PPE together to try to put it into this cubby hole into the, the copy room. Have a central area. She's been very helpful to try to get that done. It's getting done. So, you know, awareness, making sure that things are, are working are, are, are very important. So, we're gonna continue on this path and, and, you know, try to get, whatever free trainings are available, we're gonna get it, get it for, for staff.
Very good. Anything else?
I don't.
Good job. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Karen.
Well, thank Jim McKeel.
Goodnight, Jim. I seen him here yesterday, so.
He might have tripped over it.
So, and that explains it, because I seen the PPI out there and I'm like, I didn't know what it was there for, so I'm like, okay, I'm just gonna leave it alone, because I know, I don't know if Karen's putting it for a reason, for somebody to pick it up or somebody's dropping it off. So, I just left it there, like, Karen will see it in the morning and she's supposed to get it. But then I seen him outside the building and he explained it to me, so I'm like, oh, okay. But, um, thank you very much. And good work, Karen. Chief, wake up.
I was reading my, I was actually reading this here.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Farrar. Okay, so next thing on the agenda is new business. Do we have any new business? The only old business I get is, you know, the flags and stuff. You know, I seen the link that you sent about the banners and stuff, the flags from that company, and that actually looks, a pretty good company. It'd be something that you'd be interested in too, as far as like with decorations, they have all kinds of banners. But hopefully in the future, and I know we talked about this before, is to put light posts going down the center where we can put banners on them and put flags on the light posts or in the areas.
Where just in that, their light posts?
It looks good.
Really nice.
We're, it's been doing a good job.
Yeah, really nice.
So, I, I have to give it to them, you know, that board that they got up there, the information board, right at the intersection, so you're sitting there at the intersection and you see everything pop up in front of you, you're like, oh, they're having a meeting, you know? It's, it's right there. You can't help but see it every time you drive through there. And, and just the way they have the banners going through, it's just done very well. Putting a lot of thought into their, their, the center of their town, so.
I noticed how to see all the trees go though.
Yeah, I like the trees. It's Christmasy.
Yeah.
But yeah, and they do do the lights across the road and stuff, so they do a nice job. They also have Walmart and all that commercials, business in their town too, so they get all that money coming. But, all right, that's all I had. Correspondence, we have the Worcester Community Action Council notice regarding low income house, household water assistance program information, and it is placed on the website.
It is.
So, if anybody would like any information about that, it is placed on the website, so you can see that. Comments and concerns? Any comments and concerns?
I'll just mention that I was at the Woo Sox game last Friday and Wes Warren, Warren's own Rita Shiano sang the National Anthem.
Oh, really?
Yeah, one of our residents sang the National Anthem.
Didn't even know that was happening?
Yeah, pulled apart, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Very good.
Very good.
She did a great job.
All right. Anything else, sir? Uh, anybody have any comments and concerns? Mr. Conrad?
Joe Conrad, rest assured.
How you doing, sir?
I'd like to congratulate the Warren Party, but last month, there was a fire up on the Ware Road. Palmer called out for mutual aid. Within five minutes of getting the tone out, they put out two trucks with crews and were at that fire. Granted, things didn't go as well as they wanted, but they, they really did a super job. They should be really congratulated for it.
They, they do an amazing job and, you know, we do have the best fire chief in the state, so, by far. All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Conrad. Anybody else have anything? Comments and concerns? Jimmy?
I could mention about the upcoming, the fireworks in September ninth and that, earlier in that day, the town white tag sale, so there'll be more flyers, information coming out of events, same day, September ninth.
So, September ninth is the fireworks and also the town white tag sale. Very good. Thank you very much. And again, that was pushed out because rain delays and trying to get a scheduled date, because I know there was some comments on Facebook negative about, well, why are we doing it September? You know, we're several months, months past July now. It's like, it's a very competitive thing for getting these fireworks and trying to get them, you know, done. It is quite a challenge and you guys have been doing an amazing job with getting them done, Parks and everybody, and they did, they did a great job. And it is September ninth, so it's kinda like a back-to-school fireworks.
Right.
So, all right. Thank you very much. Anything else? Chiefs? Got anything? No? All right. Comments and concerns from Zoom? Say like one person on it?
Yeah, nothing.
All right. So, no com, no more comments and concerns. The next meeting is August seventeenth. We're skipping the next one next week and we're doing it August seventeenth for like the summer schedule, so we can spend some time with our families. And then, uh, the next one after that is the twenty-fourth. Okay.
That's when Derek's back.
Yeah, and Derek will be back. So, the next meeting is August seventeenth at six PM and?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufray, aye. We are adjourned.